Steve?
Steve? Could you ask the attorneys to make the public announcement for closed session? That's the first thing we need to do. Can you ask Nikki to come down?
Here they come.
I really apologize for the lateness of the hour. There's just so much going on. We'll reconvene the open session. And the public report of action taken in the closed session.
I apologize in advance. It's somewhat lengthy. As to item...
It's not working.
It's not working.
I'll speak very loudly. As to item one, the board took action on item one to deny the tender of Dr. Kumar of the Phelps versus Bruce Green matter. The motion was made by Xavier Avila and seconded by Sanobia Gutierrez and the motion passed by a vote of four to zero. On item two, the board took several actions on item two. The first was a resolution to allow and authorize Larry Blitz and Whitfleet to act as the district's agent with the California Department of Public Health. The motion was made by Xavier Avila, seconded by Sanobia Gutierrez, and passed on a vote of four to zero. The next action was a resolution to terminate HCCA's agency authority to bind the district under the Management Services Agreement or any other contract. The motion was made by Sanobia Gutierrez, seconded by Xavier Avila, and passed on a vote of four to zero. The next was a resolution to appoint Larry Blitz as the interim CEO and Dan Peckathorn as the interim CFO upon the date of the notice of termination to HCCA. And both shall be authorized on that date to act as the district's agent as authorized within the district's bylaws. The motion was made by Xavier Avila, seconded by Sanobia Gutierrez, and passed on a vote of four to zero. The next matter was a resolution to terminate HCCA's power of attorney in favor of the district. The motion was made by Xavier Avila, seconded by Sanobia Gutierrez, and passed on a vote of four to zero. The next was a motion to retain Lozano Smith as bond counsel to address and advise on the revenue bonds. Xavier Avila made the motion, Sanobia Gutierrez seconded the motion, and the motion passed on a vote of four to zero. The next was a... A motion was made to appoint Sandy Haskins to act as the chief administrative officer in the bankruptcy. Xavier Avila made the motion, Sanobia Gutierrez seconded the motion, and the motion passed on a vote of four to zero. The final motion and resolution made on item two was to enter into a business association agreement between Whitfleet and the district. This motion was made by Sanobia Gutierrez, seconded by Xavier Avila, and passed on a vote of four to zero. As to the third item, which was the MEC report, a motion was made to approve the MEC report. That motion was made by Xavier Avila, seconded by Sanobia, and passed on a vote of four to zero. As to the initiation of litigation, there's nothing to report out at this time.
Thank you. Utah, we're all having dinner. Okay, open session items. First item is a turbo of minutes for July 27th, August 9th, and October 25th. I made a list. I think we still have two more in the evening. Is there a motion to approve?
I made number two.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Four to zero is approved. We'd announced at an earlier meeting that we were having a... We're accepting the very gracious invitation of Coia Delta's staff to help us train on the financing of a public hospital. Does two things. Both gives us some very valuable information and also helps us build a relationship with our big sister in Boise. They have asked that that be done as a training seminar rather than as a meeting. So since we previously announced that I wanted to reflect that change, it is going to be a training session, so it won't be a public meeting, but certainly will gain a lot of information and we have a share with you. We are opening a bank account. Our attorneys have been asking us to do that tomorrow. Let me see what I need minutes to reflect. In order to open the account, I need minutes to reflect the business name assigned by the secretary, listing all the current officers entitled, listing authorized signers. And I was thinking maybe you being treasurer and you being the finance person would be the two signers. Does that sound right? Okay. And we need a motion to authorize to open a bank account on behalf of the district that would be separate from HCCA, both citizens' business bank. So is there a motion to that?
I made a motion.
That includes authorized signature.
And that concludes our...
All in favor say aye. Close. Okay, discussion of options regarding reopening of Evolutions. I suspect a lot of you might be interested in that. I wanted to do just a very brief, but introduction of someone that's going to make a presentation on that department. And it kind of has to do with the number four. We have more than 40,000 people that have supported us in our mission to take back our hospital through the elections, through social media. We have over 400 people that have financially contributed to our campaigns and to our effort. We have 40 people that have been meeting for well over a year, almost on a weekly basis, to accomplish what we've done to date. And we have four people up here. Whatever happens is not because of these four people. No offense, guys. It's because of all that effort and tremendous volunteerism that has gone on in this community and coming together and building of consensus and support to reflect that we are Tolaris strong. Of those 40 people that have been tirelessly working, two are attorneys that have no disrespect or I can't even call them paid attorneys. The two of our volunteers are attorneys who have donated to their office, their staff, their time, everything for that. Those two are Joseph Sors and Dennis Maderas. And Dennis, I'd like, by way of introduction, recognizing you and your firm for all the great things that you've done. So I'm forward to this.
Thanks for giving me the opportunity to discuss this. Specifically, we've had some... To bring you up to date with what's been happening since the closure of Evolutions, there were some of us that got together and realized that while your attorneys with your interim CEO and other staff are working tirelessly to get the hospital back open, there's really no reason why Evolutions can't reopen once Mr. Walter gives us the okay that the keys can be turned over to some operating entity and we can move forward in that regard. So what we've been doing is trying to come up with a concept that we could bring to the board that would enable the keys to open. Some of the idea that, and I had specifically took... We had an initial meeting with your attorney and I've had some ongoing discussions with Nikki Cunningham in that regard. And the concept basically is that we thought ahead preemptively created an entity that would engage in a short-term bridge agreement to open Evolutions absolutely as quickly as possible, basically through a lease or some kind of management arrangement that would enable this entity to hire the employees, open its own bank account, arrange financing either through equitable ownership in the entity that we've created or prepare loans that we could secure to the satisfaction of the entities that we've been talking to. And specifically, you were present today at a meeting with Tulare Industrial Site Foundation, and they've indicated tentatively that they're prepared to contribute $100,000 towards this entity, not to the district. And we would make arrangements to assure them that they would ultimately get their investment back. And basically, the way the concept would work is that, just like Fagazi's has a lease with the district for the restaurant, the health facility would... Or the... That part of Evolutions would be leased to this company, not fiscal therapy aspect or anything that's covered by the permit, along with the equipment. And that it would be operated for a period of time until the district is ready to take it back. And it would operate on the basis of basically collecting income, paying bills, and whatever the profit would be would go to the district so that the district would make the money, not this company. It would, in effect, operate as a nonprofit. We have people who have volunteered to participate in the overseeing of books. Ken Neunis has indicated that he would help with operations. Dan Martin Sors has helped tremendously in that regard. Our office will provide legal services, all on volunteer basis. The only thing in our operations as an expense would be actual out of pocket. The overall idea is to, in the course of the next few days, if you're acceptable to this kind of concept, we would quickly negotiate an agreement, either a lease agreement or whatever is acceptable with your attorneys in that regard, be in a position to where Mr. Walter could then take it. Do what he has to do to be able to enable you to give us the keys. Then we would hire staff to operate this, make sure we had a workers' comp insurance in place, our liability insurance in place, all those types of things that are necessary actually to run up business. And of course, the goal is being able to quickly move to get Evolutions itself open. We would let... You worry about getting the hospital open, we get Evolutions open. And then when you're ready, we would have an arrangement by which you could basically make us hold so that we could fold up this company and give you back Evolutions to run with employees being the district employees, not this company's employees. So it's just a bridge operation, is what we call it. Questions? Comments?
Comment? I have extremely a high amount of trust and good faith in the group that's put this together. So I just wanted to voice my support for your plan.
And I... We've had some initial discussions with Kevin and also Xavier, but there hasn't been any discussion because of brown hat situations with Mike and Sanobia. But if you have any questions on how this would be set up... I think what we've always covered in trying to figure out how to get this successful operation going again, that we don't want to be in a position where you get bogged down and it takes a lot longer. We're all getting the same question, which is, when are you going to open Evolutions? And we have to be proactive in that regard, as mentioned, we're trying to be as proactive as possible. From the standpoint of startup money, finances, that kind of thing, I defer to DM. DM knows those, has those answers. So I think if you have those kinds of questions, you can ask her. I'm working on a concept and I'm sure we can whip out an agreement fairly quickly that you would find satisfactory. By and large, we will give the lease to one of these shops that are here and we'll follow that deal now as far as including the equipment, the facility, that type of thing. But none of it... Now, this is a concept that we're bringing now and it's obviously can't... We can't move forward until we're in compliance as it relates to the bankruptcy court. It's not something that we need, I don't think, bankruptcy court approval because it's post petition operation of the asset. Is that correct? I like a definitive answer. That's it. I'm attorney. I know that you answer that way. But anyway.
Well, I think opening Evolutions would give the community a good sign that things are coming back. I want to be aware that that doesn't... That's not because Evolutions is the higher priority. The public safety of opening, reopening the hospital is the highest priority, but it has more ramifications, more state approval to accomplish that. So it's not like we're putting these in priority order even though Evolutions may open first. We do... I think if we proceed tonight with the conceptual plan, I think we need to look at the business plan and be comfortable with that as part of our redevelopment. One thing I'm very aware of is that we don't... We want to... We replace the board to never ask any questions. We want to make sure that we're asking the right questions. We didn't have a... We had the public portion of the meeting with the city council, but obviously it's through information. So as long as it doesn't take us three hours if anybody in the audience has a question.
I might add one other thing. We also are pumping the TLBC.
And the foundation.
And the hospital foundation itself. So the entities that will be involved in this are economic development entities within the community of Tulare that are indicating that they could very well have funds to help get this business back going.
The first approval today was without property securing the loan. It was a commitment to get Evolutions back, to work with the board, work with the community to get our public aid buildings back and everything. It just showed the strength of Tulare. We were really going to show this county the state of this country and Tulare is not one that's kind of rollover and has a capacity. They're going to fix it and make it better.
Yes, sir. There's some things to consider as far as Evolutions operating. There are some services and utilities that are provided through the hospital in itself and structure to support Evolutions, phones, data, applications, and all that stuff. So we need to make a little progress to be able to have those. Membership records are all backed on the data from the hospital. Stuff needs to be considered, how to continue to operate Evolutions.
Our incoming CEO is conducting meetings this week and so he may have known that the city council unanimously approved a motion to ask HCCA to cooperate with us to expedite the transition. So we're hopeful we can do that, but obviously this has not been the smooth transition we wanted, but we're hopeful we'll get that information. Is that what I can make alternative options for?
Ed?
I think opening Evolutions is very important, although the highest priority is the hospital, particularly when you get to be my age. Evolutions is very important probably to keep me out of the hospital. Mental health and physical health. One thing I'd just like to add...
I see you often at here, but we need to use the equipment.
Steve and I do enjoy talking with each other. Will there be any change in the fee or membership structure?
We haven't gotten to that.
Okay.
I think right now, the goal will be to keep things the same. Make it seamless as much as possible to the membership so that they won't even know that there's a difference. The goal would be, as I said, to be able to have them open in the very near future, have the entity open and it'll be the same regardless of the rule.
This is a no-brainer, but we are not going to charge anybody for membership for a closed gym.
Well, I noticed that because my visa is debited on the 5th of the month and here it is the 7th, and I have not had my $60 senior discount fee.
We can lay charge numbers.
Yeah. Anyway, okay, thank you, Dennis.
And I might say, it's my understanding that the decision was made to not debit anybody's account for the month of November because it's closed. Well, at least we get it open. We'll be as optimistic as possible. Anything else?
One last thing. Did you intentionally skip over item C?
That's point of order.
I unintentionally skipped over it. Anyway, I think at this point, before we quit... We've taken the liberty to have initial discussions with TLBC. We had a meeting today with TISDF. I apologize to everybody for the acronyms. Those letters do mean something, but those are economic development companies here in the city of Tulare that are designed for the specific purpose of energizing this community, seeing to it that people can go back to work and enhancing the economic development of the community itself. TISDF is Tulare Industrial Site Development Foundation. TLBC is Tulare Local Development Company. And then, of course, Tulare District Hospital Foundation. And those are the four entities that we've talked to to date. And we've talked to the attorneys for each entity. I'm the attorney for one of them, so that was easy. And then the attorneys for two of the others are married to each other, so that was easy too, getting them on the case. Tulare being a small community, everybody's looking ahead in the same direction. And I do feel that if you find this concept... If you give us the approval to move forward, we'll try to go as quickly as we can to get Evolutions open. Thank you.
Yeah, basically what I hear from Ms. Maderas, all she wanted for is a yes to go ahead and go forward, go ahead and put it in writing for the board to go ahead and approve it. I commend it and I support that you all go ahead and do that. We need to go ahead and get going. Not only is Evolutions important for public comment exercise, but it also is a big generator of revenue. So the sooner you get it open, the better.
So we're all positive.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, that was my question. I wanted to see it in writing. But also, will the district and the public still hold control over the gym with that agreement?
Well, to answer that, one of the concepts that I did bring up is to have a oversight. I know we've had that in the past, but an oversight committee that's acceptable to the board, having that oversight committee, being able to see the books, have the books open, find out what income's coming in, what bills are being paid, so that they can report back to the board. The board would have control over who actually sat on the oversight committee so that you wouldn't have to be bogged down with that. But the books need to be as open as possible so that you do know that this company that we've created is doing what we say it's going to do, which is collect the money, pay the bills, hire the staff, make sure the staff payroll gets paid. And then whatever's left over, subject to a modest reserve, goes back to the district to start generating funds. And then, you know, I don't care if it's 20 days, 45 days, two months, whenever the board is ready and your administration, it says, it's time for us to take it back, we'll have provisions within the agreement that in essence is a termination clause to shut it down and turn it back.
Alex, he said, this is phase one. It's a short-term fix while we're working on the hospital and other things. And it will come back to the district fairly quickly. Just a motion to proceed.
I'll make the motion to proceed.
You got a question here?
Excuse me. So if Evolutions opens, what will happen to the employees that were working here at Evolutions? Would they have first dibs in being rehired or because they're still contracted with HCCA till the 27th? What would happen?
Do you want to answer that, Gus?
I think we'll have to discuss that with the existing... With the attorneys when we draft the agreement and then we'll address it as an independent company as to exactly what steps we'll take.
How's that for a non-answer?
But I think it's clearly our goal to bring back the talent that we have in this organization. And if they're willing to come back, we certainly will, will consider this.
Thank you.
Okay, there was a motion. Is there a second? More discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Approve four to zero. I do apologize. I can't even blame my eyes there. I just missed C. This is discussion of the vacancy of District One. We were open for 30 days, closed last Friday. We did have two applicants in my mind. We have two very qualified applicants, so we're very fortunate. Because of the lateness of the hour, I'm questioning whether or not we want to proceed tonight or whether we want to schedule maybe...
Why don't we let them decide?
Are you comfortable with being announced?
Are they here?
Yes.
Both applicants?
Yes. The two applicants, I think you all agree with me, that they're both very qualified. Phil Smith has been involved in a variety of things throughout, and the banking industry and what comes, head of the chamber, lots of things, lots of activities for public utilities.
And our retired, our volunteer security person, Steve Harrow, who is both live in District One. Steve is... Has been involved with our... Was a career police officer with the city and is involved in various county ambulance activities and also is a personal trainer. Both have been involved in the community and have great respect in our community from everyone I've talked to so far. So it's not going to be an easy decision again, but it's, in a way, you can't make a mistake because both of them, I think, would serve well. We jumped down to consideration of special meetings during the transition time. The thought was, we've got so much going on and we need to communicate with each other and... and the Brown Act, we can't do that except at a formal notice meeting. Thought was maybe we should schedule weekly special meetings. If we don't need them, we should cancel them, but at least have them on the calendar so we could do that at least for the next thirty days or so. One thought would be Tuesday, say at seven o'clock, possibly, and how your schedules are.
My scope is Tuesday.
Yeah. PM. Eighteen hundred hours. If we do that, the next Tuesday might be the time that we could spend some time with each of these individuals and hopefully come up with a consensus on a new person. We do have a training on the sixteenth, so hopefully the new person can attend that. Alberto?
Point of order. You skipped, yeah. I know we're all tired.
I jumped down in order to talk about the, would both of you be available next Tuesday?
I don't see why not.
No problem or no?
Not available.
Not available next Tuesday? Okay. What's, when would you be?
Very, maybe Cal.
Okay, we don't know next Tuesday?
Seventeen, do that, Paul, we're Monday.
Next Tuesday's going to be the first.
Tuesday, I've got another meeting.
Okay. Is there a different time during Tuesday from I do?
Five thirty in the morning.
That's my dad's.
My father's meet's at six-thirty in the morning, so I got an hour.
I honestly don't have schedule because I'm starting training.
Well, we'll work that out. Okay. Thank you for both of you, your interest in serving on the committee and we'll look after the interview schedule. Great. It is the district. I talked earlier about all the volunteers and people that contributed. We have a volunteer with a background with news media, she's in, very good, who volunteered to help us and I thought, well, maybe we'll make sure we're all okay on that. Quick, 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 has a knee and arm and they are starting to do some new releases for it, but we may want to sue some that are more oriented to our community. And so Rick has volunteered to do that. We just want to make sure everybody was comfortable with that. We would approve anything he gives, important amount on this whole. So that's a discussion.
I make the motion that we consider Rick Yelkes as to be a local media representative.
Been moving in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Rick, you got a new volunteer. All right, I have a lot of people checking to make sure I'm kind of, should I miss it? Anybody have any comments?
We're totally close. Close, what made you pick Citizens Business Bank?
While we checked with, we wanted a local bank and we checked with a couple and they seemed to be the most accommodating. The district has a series of banks, they're all tied in ACCA. Eventually those may free up, obviously. We need something immediately. We get a check tomorrow, we have nothing.
I understand, need for a bank, I just wonder why.
Phil?
Paul, Citizens does have a large government entity portfolio. They manage cities, school districts, all up and down the state. The, as it was a matter of urgency, it seemed like an appropriate place to open the account. Obviously, if the board chooses to at a later date, changes can be made, but once again, the urgency of the matter seemed to lead in this.
I get a report every day except for weekends for the police department regarding the activities that go on there on law level. This morning I received a report indicating that there was a burglary over at the storage unit where a lot of our equipment is stored. I think it would behoove the board to find out if any of that stuff that was stolen belonged or was in one of the storage bins where the hospital has equipment. Because it's, I believe the last report that I looked at that was given to us, there was approximately over ten million dollar worth of equipment in storage, that facility. And I would hate to see or find out that some of our equipment vanished with that alleged burglary.
Our incoming CEO, Larry Bliss, is in the audience. Larry's making note of that. A lot of that equipment was bought for the tower installation and some of that equipment, obviously, is getting aged.
And another thing, Kevin, when you all go ahead and do take control, okay, you all go ahead and get the keys, I would volunteer to do inventory there. I have a lot of invoices and data on what supposedly is there or not.
Yes, I think we all have a lot of concerns, a lot needs to be done, a lot, a lot of, we can anticipate a lot of issues that may arise, but we're doing everything we can and it's, we will be successful. We're going, a couple of years from now, I'm convinced we will look back and say this was a period of turmoil, but all was worth the end result. Any of you, any of you have any comments?
I wanted to thank the city council for inviting us and I thought it was a really good meeting and I think it shows what Kevin said to Larry Strong. So I think we should all, you know, thank the city council for doing what they did. This is a time we all need to be together, put the past behind us, move forward, so.
We don't want to forget that.
No, because you're bound to relive it, but I'm not saying to forget it in that term, but.
You know, I asked it because I asked you to show up at their meetings. None of them show up at ours, so I would ask, did you guys ever talk to them or have another meeting with them? Did you ask one of them to show up monthly to one of ours?
For days.
Yeah, I mean, the other ones that asked questions that have been answered for the year.
Well, we want to be positive. We had a really good meeting with the foundation, at least I did, and some of our, some of the citizens group. And I think the meeting, I agree with Xavier, the meeting went very well tonight. We need to be looking forward and coming together as a community and I'm convinced we will do that. We've done that in the past and we'll do it again. Some of you have been with us almost four hours tonight. I can't thank you enough for your interest and participation. With that, the meeting is to the end.